But he is.
Benino.
Hey guys, can you guys hear me alright?
Yeah, we got you. Alright, um, we are gonna start with a public comment, uh, we've got Harold's. Can I come up sir? ICT trees, share a bit.
Thank you, sir.
Who?
Harold should like going with ICT trees, three fifty one with first street. So I did, uh, President Caroll, uh, Brad Davidson, members of Ford Park issues. Uh, I'm just here today because I wanted to announce that we're having a fundraiser this Saturday. I put something at your places, it's at the, uh, President Baby Day Camp, so the language is riding clouds from Oak Park. It's on the left of the street. And, uh, we have a certified, uh, arborist, uh, Robert Strecksart is going to be leading a tree walk. Uh, which is going to kick off before we end and if five is going to have a chili, chili bar to open itself because everywhere that comes. I want you to decide that you do not have to be there, you don't have to come to our bin, you know, to give us money. Uh, we need to test and, uh, what is this honey going to be used for? Uh, we want to give away a hundred trees for spring. Uh, and, and I should explain, we strategically, target these into areas that are near identified urban heat out, satisfied areas in the city. That because of concrete and build structures and so on, there are neighborhoods that are, that are near them. And that, uh, convince them. And there are also areas that tend to be very low income. Because of that, we provide those to homeowners in those areas. And, and I want to say something about, because I've heard folks say, well, why don't you give them to everybody? Well, here's the problem. We have a really good relationship with our ministries and with our garden centers. And they sell those trees and they make money for those people that can afford them. So we try to target our trees in areas where folks won't necessarily buy trees. Cause they have other ideas about how they're going to spend their money. So we want to raise ten thousand dollars, the actual cost, we listen to around eleven thousand dollars. Our trees are, uh, we are, uh, also sourcing locally now. So, uh, Hillside Nursery is going to be selling us those trees for seventy-five dollars apiece. And we are also renting from the Arbor Day Foundation their software. Which enables us to target certain neighborhoods. Those folks who registered, folks who are not living in those neighborhoods may want to try and register us that are told, we'll be the neighborhood in use soon. So, that's how it works. Thank you very much and have a wonderful rest of the day and enjoy the rain out there.
Thank you, Harold, we appreciate that. Okay, um, we've got, uh, have, did everybody have a chance to review, uh, the previous month's meeting minutes, uh, from September? Any changes? Just need a motion to approve? Got a motion from Tom, second from Phil. Uh, any other comments? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. All of the votes same time? Okay. Things are approved, things are approved. Um, new item for consideration, we, uh, go ahead.
You have one announcement.
You have an announcement? Yes.
Um, the November seventeenth Board of Park Commissioners meeting will not be held in this room. It will be held in the Chamber of Commerce, which is the big room just around the corner where all of the city council, um, hearings are held. Is the only one that we plan for the rest of this year and foreseeable meetings to be held there. Um, this room was just unavailable very, very suddenly. So we will just be around the corner over there.
That works, so we need to wear ties, jackets?
Uh, sure, yes, mandatory, everybody must dress like Reggie.
Everyone gotta dress like Reggie, dang Reggie. Well, we really need more of an audience. Okay. Something controversial. There we go, no, no, nothing like, okay, that works, thank you. Thank you for catching that, Alex. Alright, so November seventeenth will be around the corner. Alright, now we got new ones for consideration, so, um, we had a chance, I had a chance to talk with staff about polit, about our attendance policy. And I just wanted to provide Nate an opportunity to share, um, an update to, to the board and remind us, um, of our, our responsibility to our community and to our districts and what it means to serve on the park board, so, um, Nate, if you could share a little bit about that policy?
Yeah, for sure, appreciate that, and just making sure, especially as we've got some big things coming through, master plan, all sorts of projects that we need to analyze and stuff, we want to make sure we have quorum. Not as many items this month, but that's the key thing, right? So I just wanted to go over that a little bit, it's a key obligation as a board member to show up to meetings, to make sure that we have people here. And critically, board members, the really key thing you can be removed for is non-attendance of meetings. Um, and that's in the city code, so not necessarily something we can change with bylaws or some things we can tweak it to, keep some consistency and stability, but if we miss more than half of the meetings in a year or three in a row, then board members are supposed to be removed. And we've worked with that sometimes too, we understand that things happen. We're not, you know, trying to lay the hammer down on people that are trying to serve their community or anything like that. But at the same time, we're trying to do the business of the park board and everything. And it is funny to kind of like talk to people that are here, of course, about being here, so I don't mean that either. But just trying to reiterate that a little bit and, you know, a big thing too, sometimes people come in late and that's fine, and we'll count that as attendance as well. But also, we want to push people to be here as early as possible because of how we structure the agenda, to put action items first, and that's particularly when we need quorum. It's not like we need it for, um, updates or anything because we're not taking action on it necessarily. And then something we could think of is if we're, folks are missing and we're missing the action items, we could try to define that as non-attendance in the bylaws. Or we could try to do some practical stuff if folks all kind of work together and give us notice of if they'll be late, so we can switch around the agenda and put action items more toward the end. So a big thing is just trying to communicate when everybody will be present so that we can continue, continue to do the work of the board.
Yeah, and one thing I'll add is that, you know, with these action items, often they're tied to different community members or initiatives, and so folks are taking time out of their schedules to come and speak to us and, and, present, um, their efforts, their initiatives, or, you know, whatever they may be working on, um, to the park board. And, and I think it's, it is imperative that we be here. Uh, we also represent our respective districts and our communities and, again, it's important for us to be here present and help represent, uh, the wellbeing of our parks in our respective neighborhoods. Uh, but, you know, we, we, Nate mentioned, we have a lot of projects coming up that are gonna, specifically when we think about the master planning process, uh, it's gonna require a lot of our time. Um, outside of this meeting as well too. Uh, one of the big things that we were really open about with, uh, our third party, you know, folks that we hired to help us with the master planning process is that we wanted to engage the community. Well, I mean, we are the first filter of the community. And part of us engaging all of our districts is going to require that we do things outside of our, more than likely outside of our regularly scheduled Board of Park Commissioner meetings. And so, um, we, we have an opportunity to do something really amazing through this master planning process. And so I just implore everybody who's on the park board, um, be here, but also, if you don't want to be on the park board, if it's a conflict every schedule, like we, nobody's gonna be upset, right? We're not gonna be mad. More, more than anything, we'll be grateful that we can then open up the opportunity for someone else who, who can be present and be their full self of yourself.
Just want to kind of piggyback on what, uh, Lejo said, that, you know, you were appointed for a reason to represent those communities by the council members. And it's important that you be here to kind of help guide what takes place in your individual districts and kind of be the voice to share that back into the community. So, uh, as we move into park master planning, some other times it's coming up, we want to make sure that something doesn't happen in the, the community that you're representing, you're not aware of, so.
So I think it's important, if there's a meeting in our district over that, we should be there.
Yes.
Absolutely, we should be there, yeah, and, and, and I would imagine, I mean, I don't know about you, but I get a lot of emails from my district in communication. And so, you know, it's, it's hard to represent them if, if we're not here. So, um, it's just, it's important for us, where you may mention that we were appointed for a reason. And so I think it's, it is our responsibility, I don't think, I know it's our responsibility to represent the district. So, please, if you cannot make it, communicate with us, let us know if you're gonna be late. Um, if, if this is too much of a burden, again, let us know, we're not gonna hold that against you. We know that this is, this is an appointed board, it's not your full-time, it's not anybody's full-time job, but please, um, at least make room for someone else to represent if they're able to. Um, with that, I don't have anything else, Nate, so you, you shared three consecutive, we can't miss more than three consecutive, and we can't miss more than six in a year. And we've historically been really leaning on that to try and work with folks, but, I mean, I, it's come, I think, it's, it's come to a head where we have folks who aren't coming at all, so more than likely start seeing some transitions on the board, but, um, for the folks that are here, I, we are grateful for you guys and for what you all are doing and the time and the expertise that you share with the board. Alright, I don't got anything else. Um, I guess we don't have continuation of prior business, but Katie, you're up.
I've got a update on our social media pages for you. Here is updated follower count for all of our pages. Again, as always, a little bit of growth on both of these pages. Kansas Wildlife Exhibit, I believe, had about three hundred new followers last month. Okay, the top post for the Wichita Park Recreation Facebook page was regarding construction for the propped playground that started last month. So we should be seeing that playground come to fruition over the next few months. Um, and then that page overall had about ninety-one thousand reach, which was up ninety-one percent from the prior month. OJ Watson switched to fall hours at the end of September. Um, so you can see there on that screen cap, the, the new hours for the next few months. Uh, that post reads twenty thousand people, including twenty-five shares, so people are sharing the word so that everyone knows when to go to their favorite park. The Nasser Park Facebook page reached about ninety-four thousand people overall, which was up twenty-six months, twenty-six percent from the prior month. And the top post was about the positive popcorn in the park event, uh, that happened just about a week ago. Uh, was showing Secret Life of Pets and had some fun vendors out there and Kay made popcorn for, for everyone. And that post reached about twenty-three hundred people. Open Streets happened just a couple of weeks ago, uh, so that page, of course, saw a lot of activity last month. Uh, saw reach of eight-four thousand people with, with which sub five hundred percent from the prior month. And the top post reached forty-five thousand people just for that one post. That included nineteen comments, forty-five shares and a hundred sixty-nine link clicks. And then finally, the top post on the Wichita was this fun reel that has, uh, Jesse and Pro Michael Miller doing a three-hole match to give a little warm-up for the, uh, beat the pros tournament. So that post was seen about twenty-seven hundred times, interacted with thirty-eight times, including some click-throughs to find out about that tournament. And that's all I've got for you today, if any questions you might have.
About wildlife?
For the what?
Wildlife park, it's the first slide?
Yeah.
I think we need a park photo with that frog when that thing is done. It's just the same, we need a, we need a photo of all the homeboards, that frog.
We're going, going where, this, go back to that one? You ever went on that frog?
Yes.
That should be the, the thing for the nocturnation for the new board members.
Yes. Take picture of the frog.
That's awesome, thank you. Alright, Angela, you're up.
Thank you, everybody. Alright. Lucy's.
You're good, yours will just be the arrow right of us there.
Um, so, uh, fun time with, uh, recreation, um, it's not on here, but I gotta say, this event we just had, um, Saturday, we did a, a partnership with the Wichita, uh, Community Collective in USD two-five-nine. We had about fifteen hundred vendors out at Southeast, um, High School. And we had the students play, um, we also had a whole bunch of community, uh, vendors come out and, um, we actually had the wagon masters come out and cook as well. So kids got to eat, learn, and parents had to take up information about our, uh, facilities. We had about a hundred and fifty, uh, participants, uh, pull information for park and rec. Um, this season, the total number of registered football participants reached seven-hundred-and-seventy-six, marking a three-hundred-and-forty-three increase from last year's enrollment. Um, and it's only gonna get better next year. Uh, in the middle school division, which is operating under a new, uh, feeder system format, athletes successfully form in four teams in the seventh grade and reading in the eighth grade. Um, these teams have taken pride in representing their high schools by wearing team jerseys, adding varsity games. So just so you know, we are finally getting to how it is in Texas where we go into feeder schools. Um, so it's just amazing, so these kids will get to start playing on the high school, uh, athletic fields where they're five and six, and they'll just speed up until they get into high school there. Um, the Miracle League Baseball, which is final enrollment, uh, seventy-six participants, making, uh, marking an increase of thirty-one participants compared to last year. Additionally, the number of teams has doubled, rising from four teams to eight. Um, for the fourth consecutive season, uh, Friday's little pitch, uh, softball has reached its maximum enrollment of sixteen teams this year. And we just finished this last weekend due to all the weather and rains. Uh, Great Plains Danger Center, um, just so you guys are aware, they are currently, uh, kind of closed. Uh, Amanda's been basically running the facility by herself since the neighborhood is shut down. Um, she's been basically, uh, pulling it, uh, with the team over there. Um, the Great Plains Danger Center, uh, successfully provided fifty-six educational programs impacting over seven-hundred children, including more than two-hundred-and-thirty, under-thirty youth. The aquatic education field trip saw participation of over a hundred and thirty East High students to engage in hand-on, then seeing that collection to learn about watershed and water quality. Um, Saturday, September twentieth, the Great Plains Danger Center celebrated their twenty-fifth birthday bash at Center Tanner Roy's. Nearly seven-hundred attendees enjoyed a mix of music, food and nature educating activities. All of its citizens support provide free nature education due to the annual playing Danger Center partnership. Um, this is where our, uh, showcase, like being in a landscape, celebrating twenty-five years of Great Plains Danger Center at the Junior League Women Win Momland is. Uh, captivating nearly other communities oriented women dedicated to the nation Wichita. Friends of the Great Plains Danger Centers, uh, Director of Bloodthirsty, uh, Caitlin Prapatsky, along with management of Great Plains Danger Center, uh, American, uh, and all hats for the Tito's Americans. Oh, so glad it's a bird and not a snake. Uh, warning, they are holding an adventure Saturday from four to seven, um, ours in the park at Great Plains Danger Center. Aquatics, um, all aquatic facilities, including swimming pools and splash pads are now closed for the two thousand twenty-five season. Yay! Um, aquatics in the process of filing a comprehensive list of facility issues to discuss building services, um, between a week here and a couple of weeks on that. Um, this list will include both major and minor services that need to be addressed to ensure the facility operates sufficiently and is safe. This is really cool, um, Charles, uh, McAfee, the pool was built in nineteen sixty-nine. It's the first in Kansas design of African-American children to practice last swimming. It is newly listed on the National Register of the Slower Places. It was renamed in two thousand twenty-one after architect Charles McAfee, a notable figure in the New Orleans architecture. Uh, Charles McAfee shared his thoughts on the pools listing in a recent interview. Um, and we can share that all with you guys, it was a really great interview, I could learn a lot from that, especially more than raised here.
Is that who that picture is?
Yeah, that's Mr. McAfee, sorry. Um, program, uh, on September twenty-third, floating on the river concluded its final flow, uh, returning after a year break with twenty-five new kayaks. Uh, weather issues, particularly heavy rain led to cancellations of the river's flow rate exceeding safety levels. We were only able to do four out of the nine, um, this year, with over seventy participants. While eighty-five scheduled participants from canceled flows mostly received refunds. Uh, the program specialists completed two special reports on scholarship participants, summer camp program. Including a summer program in houses detailed class enrollment, attendance, revenue and expenditures. Uh, this info is included in our end-of-year reports for the city manager. Um, planning for the two thousand twenty-six city crew, which is a three-kids club for ages six, or kids ages two to twelve, um, season is in the progress, there's only one event left for the current year. And that event's gonna be held on November the fifteenth at the Great Plains Danger Center. Um, and that's from twelve to two. Um, community members reviewed enrollment and participation results from two thousand twenty-five. Switching from monthly to bimonthly, events have increased, attendance should continue next year. Nassar Park, um, Royce Theory hosted two events in Nassar Park, this collaboration aims to activate public parks with community driven programming. Uh, story time in the park, at the turn of the second and fourth Tuesday of September, featuring readings and physical activities. Attendance was, was about seventy-one to forty-six. The second reading was moved indoors to high communities center due to the rain. Unchained Ministries rented the park on September twelfth and thirteenth and receiving a twenty-five percent discount. We got about six-hundred-and-sixty dollars revenue. Uh, Margarita Fest took place on September twentieth, selling highlighted tickets. Um, we collected a rental fee of thirteen twenty. It was very busy that day, um, we're looking at doing some other stuff to partner with the same guy that put that on out in Nassar Park. Um, freedom music DJ on the last ride of September with thirty attendees. The Wichita Wagon Masters Downtown Chili Cookoff utilized the park of various activities September twenty-seventh. Uh, that was a cool event, only five dollars to try a whole bunch of different chilies. Um, Open Streets ICT closed the month of September twenty-eighth, featuring a DJ and a fitness class. And at Woodard, so, um, on Friday, September twelfth, uh, we did interviews again, uh, for the Recreation Supervisor, Chief of Division for the Nassar Park Recreation Center. Just so you know, we have been offered, um, hopefully the participant will take it. But, uh, we're hoping to get them in as soon as possible. Um, what's really cool is we held a, uh, roller skate workshop. Um, each was an hour long, um, priced at twelve dollars for a class, and we ended up generating over four hundred and eight dollars in revenue. And this is just, um, we're just starting, we're looking at offering it again in the winter, and we're also gonna look at putting it over at Rur as well. So she'll do one day at Woodard and then one day at Rur. Um, our extreme hip-hop aerobic class, um, is thriving in both participation and revenue. Um, this sixty, forty-five minute class has, um, thirty-one people involved in it, and we generated over a hundred and eighty-seven dollars in revenue. And this is the new class for us at Woodard. Um, uh, and at Woodard Recreation Center's fall basketball class, uh, are killing it, uh, we have over ninety percent enrollment. And we generated over four hundred dollars in revenue for the first session. We started new session here in two weeks. Um, and then on Friday, September twenty-sixth, we partnered with Newland Humming Trees to hold a Fridays Strump in our gym. And we have over three hundred youth and about forty-five teachers in attendance. Let me tell you how messy it gets with kids in the jail. Uh, Wathem Park, um, they just finished, uh, theirs, they concluded their, um, fan volleyball on September twenty-fifth with strong participations. Um, in September, Season Venue held ten successful events. They never have any issues with having events in Season Venue, let me tell you, it is pretty much packed out every weekend during the weekdays. Um, Wathem Parks covered millions, held fifty-two gatherings for family and friends in September. Um, the park adjusted hours at eight AM, six PM, starting September twenty-second, arriving at the home we gave from twelve to five. Um, we, Island started on September twenty-seventh, and it's gonna be running every Friday and Saturday, it's gonna open at first. Um, it sold out last weekend and then this weekend, so it's had great turnout. And I don't know if you guys like it or not, I don't, I don't got a strong heart, I went through the, I went through it and it was kind of scary, let me just tell you. Any questions?
Questions? Awesome.
Awesome.
Thank you, Angela. Let him go through, take photos. I'm too old, man, I don't got.
That's what I said, my heart could barely.
These can't run that fast, might tear something. Alright, Jesse, you're up, sir.
Alright, I was jumping in, uh, looking at all that was through the end of September. Uh, September was not, or it was fine, we almost met the, the same revenue we had last year, but we had a little tough time with the weather. Uh, with all the airifications, I think I mentioned it last time. Uh, every week that we did an airification, it did not work out, so instead of being closed today, it was closed three in four days, so. Uh, I mean, so not, not terrible. Um, looking at rounds, we're really close to last year, right at sixteen hundred less than last year, but, um, with everything, not, not too concerned, pretty happy with that. We're still on track to be, uh, around a hundred eighty, I did projections, I think it was like a hundred eighty-eight thousand is what it came out to by the end of the year. Depending on weather, of course. Uh, September rounds, again, down just a little bit, that's all, um, mostly due to the weather, but we, we still came in pretty close. Um, car rentals, we're up, we're at a hundred and eleven percent over last year, so we're up about a hundred and twenty-five thousand or whatever that is, um, over last year. Food and beverage is up, uh, about sixty thousand, um, probably enough same number. So I guess everyone that rents cars also buying the exact same amount of food, we're both at a hundred and eleven percent increase. So, um, driving range comparison, we're up twenty, close to twenty thousand, uh, sixteen thousand. Um, with as much range we, we've had, as many times as we've had to close ranges, very happy with that. Um, I still think that's an area where we can increase our revenues, uh, with the courses. We only have some nativity to where our prices are set, so it's kind of hard to, you know, do a lot more with that, but the other stuff, uh, we can, we can increase in the driving range, I think it's still something that we can continue to improve and be attractive for people to come practice. Uh, year today merchandise, we're at, um, closing in on last year, we've kind of been chasing uphill battle all year, we're, we're closing in, so pretty happy with that. Again, we did that big fire sale at Auburn last year to get rid of the, the leftover merchandise, without that, we're doing much better, so. Happy with the guy doing there, and then total revenue, we are up just through CPS, which is our operating system, we're up, uh, three-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand. Now, there's a lot of revenue on the back end that doesn't go through this, so we're up, uh, through the end of September, I think it was four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand roughly. Um, and then this month in October, so far through the first twelve days, we're already forty-two thousand up over last year, so we can keep the weather, I'm hoping to, to beat last October about a hundred thousand and altogether be, get it over, uh, five-hundred-and-fifty thousand or something up over last year total, by the end of the month. Project funds, lost up in the works, but we haven't spent a lot, really much at all, so not a lot of change from last time, everything looks healthy. Um, our general fund, I haven't gotten the update, um, for this month, but we should be somewhere around eight-hundred thousand, um, in net revenue this year. Uh, which will put our general fund at one point eight million, and then, of course, say it every, every month, anything over a million would be started into this, so, uh, looking pretty strong. We do have three RFPs that are open right now, probably one more in the works we'll put out before the end of the year. But the, well, the irrigation we got actually closed, and we had two million dollars budget for that, and it came back at one, on the next lot, one million seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, so about, um, two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, essentially under budget, very, very happy with that number. Um, and the, the bid goes, went to United Golf LLC, which is a very reputable company, they've done tons of courses that I've called and, uh, got very good feedback, so excited to get that project going. Uh, we also have the bunker renovation that, that we got, that is open right now, um, should close in a couple of weeks. And then new point of sale on the operating system, that closes on the twenty-fourth, I'll be putting a committee together, that's gonna be a long process for the selection, there's so many different components to that. Um, on the customer side, on our side, and the reporting side, to make sure we have clean data. Um, I'm hoping that we can get a system that allows more flexibility with what we can allow the customers to do with booking tee times. Uh, that might, you know, our biggest problem right now is lack of tee times, we have so many leagues, it's a big issue, and we've talked about it in here. Uh, hoping that this point of sale will be one little piece of trying to solve that, that problem. Uh, but I, there were five of us that went to Vegas to a conference a few weeks ago, and a lot of these companies were here, of course, most of them I know, there were a few companies I'd never heard of, and they were all coming up saying, hey, we're gonna spend a bit, we saw the RFP. So I expect a pretty big, uh, response for that RFP, which is great. Um, the, today, our new superintendent at SIM, he's upstairs in orientation, about to wind down that marathon of a day. Uh, and, and I was hoping he'd be done, just gonna try. Uh, and, and I was hoping he'd be done, I was gonna try to just put him on the spot, introduce you, but he's still there. So Jeremy's interest in name, we're extremely excited to get him started. Uh, so tomorrow morning he'll be at SIM and we're back to the full staff on the maintenance side, on the management side, so. Um, that's a great thing. Darren Norman went from SIM, he took the Auburn Hills position and. I don't know if he's played in the last couple of weeks, but he's, you know, we made a list of projects, he's knocking them out one after another, so. Very happy with, with Darren, what he's doing out there so far.
Where would you pretend to come from?
Uh, he went, uh, Pittsburgh Crestwood Golf Course, yep. Uh, he, he's definitely ready, ready to go. He's said to me eighty thousand times in the last three weeks, which is, I love it. He's, he's very.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Did, uh, United Golf, did they do Sims?
They did not. That was, uh, Landscapes Unlimited. Uh, they were very close, but they were, I think it was about forty thousand dollar difference. Uh, but again, I'm, I'm familiar with, with United Golf, just talking to other people that have, of course, that they've been working with. Very confident.
And when did they break ground on this?
We're working through that right now, so they're going through the, to get the contract officially working sun and then we'll start.
Were I oversee this year on Mac?
Yeah, just it.
Oh, did it again, okay, perfect.
It's starting, I was out there, sorry, Monday, so Friday, and it, it's starting to pop up. Yep.
More questions? Thank you, Jesse. Gary, you're up, sir.
Click with mine, finding where things are.
Alright. Um. For, for their maintenance, such projects, we have been busy. September was a really busy month. Um, I went back and checked, uh, did not do the math though, but. So many different problems this year about emergencies when it comes to forestry. There's about a thirty-five, forty percent reduction in the number of emergency tasks that we accomplished in September. Because our emergency labeled tasks are done for our substorms. We still have a lot of high priority stuff, still have a whole lot of regular stuff to do, but our emergency work is done, so that is a huge accomplishment. Uh, but there's still more to do. Our, our pruning numbers are up, our tree removal numbers are, are good and consistent. Uh, but our, uh, emergency tasks that we're, we've been. I'm thinking here are, are, are done now. And we hope we can translate that into getting other things done. Specifically, uh, planting the four hundred bare root, maybe four hundred and sixty, whatever the true number is. Around four hundred, uh, bare root trees this fall and, and winter. Uh, we've already expanded a few of those, not in great mass, but we've taken some of those out of the gravel bed. Which is where we've had hell since April of twenty-four. Uh, and we were really worried, we didn't know what we were gonna find because there's no, there's no book on it. There's no research that says, hey, whole, whole gravel bed tree is over for two years. So we were very pleasantly surprised at the amount of roses that these trees had. They're still alive, they're healthy, uh, we're very encouraged, uh, about what we found through that, so. Uh, we're gonna get those trees planted, uh, and then in terms of what we're looking at for the future is. How can we replicate that year over year over year? How can we begin the process of. Finding trees and doing the exact same thing, holding them over for a couple of years. And, and always have those in reserve to keep planting. So that's something that we're looking at. Uh. Big thing is, uh, we've issued the, um, RFP for stump removal. We're about to issue, uh, uh, RFP for, uh, tree stump removals, so where the trees still exist. Uh, and then we just got done, does he, am I correct that the work at Mac is done? Okay, I thought that was right. Uh, so a bunch of trees were removed at Donald Golf Course. With forty additional stops, uh, eighty trees, forty additional stops. Uh, and that will help clean up that golf course, so we used contract to do that, uh, golf assisted with, uh, some of the funding with that. Um, but those are some big taken items that we're working on for sure. Uh, construction special project section, uh, as you guys know, this is a very detailed list. Uh, we're not gonna go through everything, but I want to definitely, uh, call out a few things. One is the number of times that you see the word repair or replaced. Uh, and if you see the word install, I think there's only one time in this first line I have where it's not installed a replacement for. Uh, so, uh, this, uh, Monrova Beach was installed, but I think that's the only new thing that is on this list. Uh, everything else is either repaired or replaced. Uh, but I wanted to call that out because Brett and his team is so integral in keeping. The infrastructure of what we have in usable and nice condition, so that. When you go and utilize the park, you're not noticing, hey, there's something. If you don't notice there's something wrong, that means it's right, or it's, it's close to right. Uh, so they, they do an amazing job and, uh, they, I'm just, I'm not gonna stop calling it out. Uh, they, they do a great job of keeping our playground safe and, uh, that's mentioned several times through here. Um, we moved, removed a lot of graffiti, um, a lot of different locations. Um. There's something that really, really wanted to be, uh, called out. Had some vandalism, some broken bench swings, things like that. Um. More reinstalled, more replaced, more repaired. Uh, just different various items throughout our park system. These guys are all over the place, three hundred and five playground installations. Um, did want to mention it, it's mentioned again elsewhere, but, uh, we have begun. And made huge progress on repairing the playgrounds, Sleepy Hollow, West Meadows, East Cessna. And February, those are the four, uh, playgrounds that were flooded out. The EWF, the engineered wood fiber needed to be replaced. Um, so that process is really on its way. Have had some additional rain events, uh, that have, uh, gotten in our way, but we are definitely making that progress in those. Um. Brett and a couple of, uh, staff did help with the installation of the, uh, Kansas Fall Fire, Fallen Fire Center Museum Park Sign. Uh, so that was, that was a good thing that we got to do, the sign looks great. Um, the manufacturer of the sign needed a, a little bit of equipment, a little help, uh, on our part to get that done. Um. This is what I wanted to call out. So I think we talked about it before, we, we helped, we partnered with WSU that use. Clap Park is, uh, the, uh, official, uh, cross-country track. I don't know if you call it a track in cross-country, I never ran in cross-country, if you could imagine that. Uh. We, working with him, working with Renee, uh, and some other partners and working with WSU. We, we've developed a platform forward that is really going to create a better environment. Both for the runners, but also for our staff, reduce the amount of input that we have to have when they have one of these events. Putting off this as, uh, acer turf, um, artificial turf, whatever you wanna call it, uh, is a lot of work. That stuff is heavy. Uh, you can't just throw it over your shoulder and carry it out. Uh, it takes equipment, it takes trucks, trailers, all this stuff to distribute to all these crossings and all the bridges. So what we're doing is working, uh, in conjunction with all the different people that I mentioned. And, uh, we're looking at changing where those crossings are. From just regular concrete to a surface that is both walkable, you can roller blade across it. It's not gonna interfere with any ADA issue or anything like that, so any pedestrian can use it. But it's also gonna work for the track slags as a cross. And it's not gonna be a danger to them, so we're looking at getting that project done, which will. Essentially make a zero input for our staff when they go to have an event, which is awesome for us. It's also awesome for them. Uh, but anyway, that, that is a huge project that we're working on. But in the meantime, this last, uh, fall, hoping this is the last time we do it, but. Worked with you to, to make that event happen and all I've heard was that it was a very successful event.
Make it less slippery winter too.
It should be less slippery, yes. Um, you know, there's a sheet of ice on everything, there's gonna be a sheet of ice on that, but it shouldn't be, uh, any more slippery than Calgary. So. Uh. Big topic of, uh, attention was the fire curtain in the, in the bubble at the tennis center. There was a lot of heads that got put together about how to make a repair to the, that curtain. Uh, a lot of, um, discussions were had and I think. It was Brett's team that just implemented, someone said, they might have been Brett, Brett said, yeah, Brett, Brett said, yeah, of how to get it fixed, but they implemented it. And so, great teamwork there. Uh, Brett's thrilled with the repair. Uh, we all know that it's not gonna last forever. But they did a great job working together to get that done. Um. Made some progress on Glen Village, glad to, uh, announce that. Uh, it's not quite done yet. Uh, there's a picture right there of, uh, Sleepy Hollow where it was repaired. Uh. The, the new EWF, so that one I believe is complete, ready? That one is complete, right? I know that they're working on it, yeah, so we're good there. Uh. Touch on all that. Uh, getting into park maintenance, uh, here's just quick pictures and updated pictures. I don't know that all the rest of the pictures in, in this section are, are new, but, uh, some new malls that we put down in front of, uh, city ours. Uh, in, in Little Town. Um. This is kind of a little bit of a same thing. Uh, there's a lot of the stuff that we do that's just repetitive. Uh, we're still managing vegetation, we're still, uh, working on the contract maintenance, uh, bid. And I, I think we're gonna talk about, uh, some of that here in a little bit. Uh, there's some touch on the, uh, private property, we're not a little private property, but the right of way issue that, uh, that we're dealing with there. Uh, and check these things out. Uh. We are actively working on our winter list, uh, so, well, we always have more. Projects than we have winter, so that's not gonna be an issue. Um, this last September is, we helped with the IC, Open Streets ICT. Um, there's so much work that goes in behind scenes to make that kind of event, uh, get pulled off. And safety for the participants is utmost importance. And our team did a fantastic job. Uh, and when I say our team, I don't just mean maintenance, I mean, there's all, nearly all the parking wreck. Was all, at least all portions of it, uh, in, in getting that to happen. Uh, Tim and Renee were a, a huge help in, in, uh, some of the aspects, so. It does take a lot of teamwork to make that, uh, happen. And then the staff that's there that day. Uh, really putting in, uh, excellent effort to, uh, keep the public safe for such, for such a big event. Uh, did they ever come up with a number of people that were attend, in attendance, was it twenty thousand that we estimated? Twenty-five thousand? Yeah, I missed it, that's something surprising. Uh, a lot of folks, a lot of folks walking up and down our streets, so, um. Wanted to give a, a thank you to PD for assisting us with being our protected protection as we put out the, uh, barriers. And get those set up and then later on to take, take down. Uh, so that was, uh, a big deal. Um, and of course, we've got athletic league playing, uh, so those fields need to get worked. Our Noxious Crew, uh, Wee Crew, they're, they're working where they can when they can, when the weather is. Helping us out. And of course, we're picking up trash, it was picking up illegal dumping and, uh, we're picking up, uh. Posted. Almost there, so, any questions for maintenance? A lot.
A lot. Thank you, Gary, thank you, the team. Alright, um, I want to see Brandon. Reggie, do you have an update from the Park Foundation? I know they were doing some strategic planning as well and.
Well, they're actually, uh, moving forward with, uh, uh, implementing their, uh, strategic plan as well. Uh, they're working in conjunction with us to be able to look at some of the things that we're capturing, so they can include it into their, uh, master plan, so we don't duplicate the efforts. And one of the big things that they're, uh, doing right now is they're working to do a video to capture. The improvements that have happened down at Clap Park, so that's gonna be part of their campaign with showing how activated it's been since the investment they've made there. And, uh, working with, uh, a group that's, a little event group that's going in to, to capture that on. To put out as part of their campaign that they move forward. And they also approved, uh, at their last meeting to contribute towards the, uh, for our master plan that's coming up, so. They're, uh, doing, uh, a little over fifty thousand dollars towards that, that we're gonna be using with. And we'll give a little bit of update on where we are with.
Do you think they'd be willing to come to, uh, at our, uh, the next meetings, maybe that? Uh, maybe December, something like that, uh, an update, or is that too soon in their process?
Uh, I think they should have some of it done by the end and, uh, and I can circulate with Brandon, who's the, uh, board president. But one of the things that they, uh, said that they wanted to be intentional about moving forward is having more, uh, interaction between the park board and the park foundation. They kinda see what things are kind of our priority and how they can help with how they're allocating resources, uh, to help support us, so. They are looking to be, uh, uh, more collaboration moving forward.
Thank you. Questions for Reggie on the foundation? Okay. Um, I, I don't have an update, I would just reiterate, um, and remind everybody of the attendance policy and. You know, it, it's just, it's really important that, that we participate, if, uh, we understand that the privilege and the responsibility. That we have to be on the park board, um, so if you, if you have to miss, we know life happens, I know I've missed in the past, and so. Um, just let one of us, let somebody know, staff or one of the board members, so that we can prepare. Um, but it is really is important for the, for the park board to be present and help, um, make decisions and make recommendations on. Everything related to our park system, so. Yeah, sir.
Well, a few things that's coming up, I think that's, uh, really important that I want to share with, uh, everyone as well. Uh, Brian is not here today, but just giving, um, kind of a brief update on the budget. Uh, we're anticipating from our forecast that we're gonna see over a million dollars under our budget, uh, for this fiscal year. And we're still, uh, seeing an increase in our revenue while reducing some of the expenses that goes along with it. And because of some of those savings, we're gonna be able to invest back in forestry that Gary put out for, uh, tree and stump removal. To, uh, come, take care of some of that backlog on it, and I think it's, uh, from what John, uh, predicted, predicted there. It's gonna be a ninety percent, uh, reduction and a tree, uh, and about fifty percent in the stump removal. So those are significant ones. We have savings there, we're able to use those for some of those other things to help make a bigger impact in the community, so. Uh, they'll be getting that process started pretty soon. Uh, park master plan, uh, Katie's leading that process. We are looking to finalize the steering committee, uh, coming, uh, soon. Uh, with being able to kick that off, we're planning to have the initial meeting, uh, next week to, uh, get ready to kick off in November. Uh, for the plan and it's roughly twelve, few months that we're looking at. I mentioned, uh, earlier that the, uh, Park Foundation is donating fifty thousand dollars towards that. And the county has also committed an additional fifty thousand dollars towards it as well. So we're gonna be incorporating kind of our transition of what we're doing with more working with the city and county with some initiatives that we have. So I shared a little bit here, uh, we've been meeting ongoing with them, you'll see that's the blue sheet that's there. On from our meetings that we've had with the county on some of, uh, programs that we're looking at that we can implement with, uh, partnering for using. Lake Appton, Central County Park, uh, that's here, on some ideas that we can do at those locations to kind of identify whether they're youth. Uh, health and wellness, family oriented, and whether they're free or based, so we're excited about that. Uh, we've all already, uh, taken the first step with, uh, our, onto our website, we're sharing rental opportunities. Uh, we've all already uh, taken the first step with uh, our uh, onto our website, we're sharing rental opportunities. So that you can log on to the city or the county webpage and see uh, run until you go to available, and the next step in that is. We're gonna be looking at how they can come on board with RecTrack, which is our rec uh, management software system. So anyone in the community can uh, and be able to register for any of our programs. So we're excited about moving forward with that, and the park master plan is gonna help guide some of those things, so they're invested with helping support that too. So Gary mentioned a little bit earlier uh, about uh, the uh, by the ways, uh, one of the uh. Projects that Gary and his team was uh, showing was looking at ways that we can essentially save some dollars with some of the anticipated uh, budget. Uh, reductions that would in the future, one of the things that was identified was right-of-way mowing. So uh, City Ordinance actually has uh, listed that in the right-of-way that's adjacent to the property owners, that they. Mow areas that are there, and we have been mowing it through our contractors, so we're making the adjustment now that those properties are being identified that. Uh, the contractors won't be mowing any longer, the adjacent property owners will have to maintain it. Uh, with some exception to that, where there is near the big ditch or environmental concerns, but we'll continue to maintain that, so it doesn't become an issue. But we're anticipating with those changes uh, going into the next year, that we're gonna see a uh, realize about two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars roughly in. Cost savings that we'll have uh, in our budget, we will be getting our correspondence to those property owners that are gonna be impacted. And then the March timeframe of next year, when we're looking at rolling that out, so it won't be that you're gonna notice this week, and then next week, the. Changes are happening, people are informed, and the last thing that we're on, we're uh, working on is uh. Well, two more things actually, is La Familia, that's up in District uh, Six, where Councilmember Baden and Tom represents. Uh, that facility there has uh, been a location that's been primary for senior services for years. We're working with uh, Wichita State uh, for their policy uh, department, we're doing an evaluation. From the community on what type of program and they will obviously happening at that facility, now that they're finalizing that report. We're looking at moving forward, we're putting out an RFP for individuals in the community to see how they would like to uh, potentially repurpose or either. Continue with the same, provided there to expand services to meet uh, better meet the needs of what the community wants. And then finally, one of the things that I know that uh, Philip has uh, been real involved with is the volunteer program. So we're working right now that we're gonna look at rolling out a program after the first of the year, and it's gonna be expansion of our. Uh, adopt a park program, where we're gonna be going out to those residents in the neighborhood association, and getting them to adopt the parks that they're in the community. Working with United Way with their volunteer groups that they have, to be able to get them assigned when they have projects, so we're gonna have. Uh, two people on our team that's gonna come and have kind of ten projects that are available, so when we get a request. We can hand it off and ask someone who's assigning those uh, different projects to the community, and work in conjunction with our. Neighborhood Association, so that we can do a better job with maintaining those communities, and have some vested interest from those residents who live there near the park. Who will, once they have that sweat equity in it, they're gonna make sure that it's uh, maintained, keep an eye on it for us to be able to. Make sure we do those things that are needed in the in those communities, so a lot of good things that are happening here, rolling into the new year, and uh. We take park master plan, it's gonna be uh, really key for us to uh, help kind of set the direction of where we're gonna be for the next uh, ten to fifteen years. And uh, our next steering committee will have a representative from here with the uh, with the park board, as well as a representative with the uh. The Park Foundation that uh, will be reaching out uh, to get that finalized here soon.
Um, I know we have a lot of big projects that are coming to a close, um, can you remind us of like some of those? Like ribbon cutting and important dates that are coming up, so like, I know Brewer's coming up, and then we're wrapping up some stuff at Pratt. Is, what other things should we be aware of that you, that we need to support?
Sure, so uh, Brewer's coming up on deep December sixth, that's gonna be the grand reopening for that particular location that uh. We're gonna have there on site, that's gonna be part of, we're gonna have the Brewer family that's there representing, giving out some tokens of uh, from uh. Uh, for him to give to the first one hundred people to come out for the event, we're gonna have samples of the classes that we're offering to our other facility. And it's gonna be in conjunction with uh, Councilman Johnson, District Preface, so preference will be served there. Working in conjunction with the school districts, so some of the students are gonna be preparing to view it through their culinary arts program. Uh, we're also, uh, of course, you know, we just finished up the uh, Pratt Redlands project that was there, now they're in the process of doing the place. That gets further along, we'll have more information on when that's gonna take place. Uh, and another big thing that's uh, in the horizon right now is in the Plainview Calvin Community, uh, we did get the approval to move forward. We're putting in a community center there, so we're in the process right now of working to the uh, land and water conservation. To uh, give our plan of how we're gonna use that space, uh, because whenever you use. Uh, outdoor space or indoor space, you have to say how that's gonna be a benefit to the community, and how are you gonna repurpose it, so we're finalizing that. And uh, Katie has uh, helped taking the lead on that with Angela, with the programming and things that we're doing in conjunction with uh. The council member there and the uh, community resource uh, person in that area. Then some of the other things that are gonna be in the horizon that we're still working on is the Barry Sanders Football Complex that we're. We were really close waiting on a potential uh, national uh, company that may be coming on board to help support that effort, and. Hopefully we'll have something soon about what the next steps are with that, uh, we should be kicking off our billboard program, we're putting out community. Uh, information on it, we've partnered with Lamar Signs here, who's gonna donate that uh, space for us to be able to get out for our brick campaign that we're doing. Where you can purchase it in the Plaza area there, and then some other projects that are gonna be coming up uh. In the horizon after that is gonna be some of the things that we're gonna be doing out at Christopher Lake with uh, moving forward some of those projects. As well as uh, uh, you guys remember previously talked about the K ninety six project, and ours is gonna impact the. Chisholm uh, Creek area there, and there's gonna be some new developments on that coming up soon as well. So quite a few projects that are coming up that uh, we think gonna be a big improvement to the uh, park system. And uh, one uh, that you guys probably remember that we had that was a while back, that's been there, is uh, through housing. Uh, there is, that's um, public housing that's uh, near on S Street near where. Uh, the area on twenty fifth, uh, where they are transitioning some of those from being in housing to private. Uh, companies purchasing and people uh, doing renovations there, that park, they're in that neighborhood. We're making improvements to that park and putting new playground equipment in there, and uh. Last piece is gonna be uh, working to get signage up there as well, so they had dollars there as part of the transition to cover that. So that's one of those things that we have to worry about paying through our budget, uh, and CIP in parks, uh, to make that transition.
Um, alright, anyone have anything else? Alright, well, I guess uh, we'll move to a journey, thank you, everybody.